In session, this is part two for March 4th. This is actually the March 4th, 2021 Agenda, Planning Board Agenda. So we had a full morning already. I already made announcements at the beginning of the open meeting, so I'm not going to start all over again, except to say that we have our full complement, our full planning board. We have Vice Chair Bailey, Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Geraldo, and Commissioner Donner. We have our Chief of Development Review, James Hunt. We have our Planning Director, Ms. Checkley here. We have our different technical hearing writer today for the March 4th Agenda, Marie Proctor. We have Kenny Flanagan over here, Senior Planner, over here working on PowerPoints and whatnot. And we have our Visual Media Specialist, Ryan Cron, and also our Planning Board Administrator, so here, present and accounted for. We do have a little glitch here, so I'll probably take a break after one or two of our afternoon cases. And I won't make the same announcements, except to say that it is Women's History Month, and we want to celebrate all the women in our lives. And I'm starting by honoring those who passed on and honoring the women on our planning board and in the commission and in our viewing audience. And then the other two things I would say again, just because we believe in celebrating to the hilt, I would say happy birthday to our own Peter Goldsmith, our Senior Legal Counsel, and who's just celebrated a birthday. And happy birthday to our Leap Your Baby, our quintessential motion maker, Commissioner Sean East Washington. So happy birthday, everyone. And with that, I am going to proceed with our afternoon agenda. The first item on our afternoon agenda is the Consent Agenda. So is there anyone here to oppose the staff's recommendations on items 4A through 4F? Or any board member who wishes to discuss? And before you make a motion, I do have people who are signed up. And hopefully, it's only if there are any questions, but maybe not, because I've seen Mr. Rivera has, you know, has his camera on. So, Mr. Rivera, you have signed up on item 4F.
Yes, just here for questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, just if there are any questions, okay. And on item 4D, we had four people signed up on that. And that, and Mr. Flanagan, you need to get ready for that. That would be Mr. Tedesco.
Good evening, Madam Chair, I'm here. We signed up just in the abundance of caution, but as you know, the board doesn't actually have any authority to have a hearing on special exceptions, but we're here as should there be any questions.
Okay, got it. And so that would be, and that's Ms. Shum as well. She, let the record reflect that she signed up, and Ms. Bader. Okay, so, all right. So with that, no one's speaking. So with that, I'm going to now entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, at the consideration of the records for the items 4A through 4F, I move adopt to the staff findings and approval of the items on the consent agenda in accordance with the recommended staff. Second?
We have a motion by Madam Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Washington. Madam Vice Chair?
Vote A.
Commissioner Washington?
Vote A.
Commissioner Donner?
Vote A.
Commissioner Geraldo? You're muted. Okay, I.
I vote A.
Okay, so the Is had it at 5-0. Our next case is item 8, which is the detailed site plan 14028-04. It's the University of Maryland Capital Regional Medical Center, Capital Region Medical Center. Mr. Seaver, are you on?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. This is Henry Zhang.
I don't know if that's your phone, but we're having a feedback problem. Mr. Ship, are you on?
I am.
Wonderful. Mr. Bickle?
I'm present.
Wonderful. Laura Kautz?
Present.
Did I pronounce it correctly? Probably not.
No, yes, you did. That's a first.
Okay, well, wonderful, thank you. It could happen every once in a while, okay. And that concludes our sign-up list. Mr. Zhang, you are on.
Muted.
Yeah, I can't, Mr. Zhang? Mr. Zhang, you're definitely muted. Oh, Mr. Zhang.
Sorry for that.
Okay, no worries.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. For the record, this is Henry Zhang with the Design Section. Item 8 in front of you is a limited detailed site plan confined to the comprehensive signage plan for Prince George's County Regional Hospital, currently known as University of Maryland Capital Region Medical Center. Next slide, please. Next slide, please.
Mr. Flanagan, he's working on it. Next one after that? Okay, is that what you want, Mr. Zhang?
Please, next slide, please.
Keep going.
Yeah, the subject site is in Planning Area 73, Council District 6. Next slide, please. Specifically, the site is located on the south side of Medical Center Drive.
Mr. Zhang? Are you fading out, Mr. Zhang? Something's... His what? Your audio is off, Mr. Zhang. How do we, how do we straighten that out? Can you mute me? Mr. Zhang? You're having computer issues, I think. So you may have to call in. I don't know if you can hear me. Maybe he can't hear me. Are you calling him?
Looks like his microphone button came back. So it might be now that to unmute him. It was actually read out before.
Okay. Mr. Zhang? Okay.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Sorry for that. I don't know what's going on. Okay, this is, as I was lying red, this is the subject site. It's on the south side of Medical Center Drive. Next slide, please. Next slide, please.
Yeah, so...
Next slide, please.
So it's not the one with the purple, with the zones? With the zoning categories?
No, I saw the site vicinity map. Next slide, please.
We're on the zoning map. Is that the one that you're looking for? We were wondering if he wasn't catching.
No, just keep the...
What's the label on the slide that you want? What's the number? Mr. Zhang?
He's muted again.
Can you, can you, can you unmute me? Let me back on. Mr. Zhang, you are muted. You have to unmute yourself. Okay. All right, we're going to go to another case. It might be where he's sitting, wherever he is. Which they told me in my house, too, they were telling me. And Mr. Zhang? Head, if you can hear me.
Madam Chair, this is James Hunt. I just called Henry. He's going to call in right now.
That's what I'm asking, but I can take another case, you know.
Yes, go ahead and take, go ahead and take another case, and we can come back to that, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to pass this case temporarily, and we're going to go to another one. Where I think the thing we will go is item... Is he on the phone now? Mute him. That means he's on. Okay, all right. Mr. Hunt, you will take care of the Mr. Zhang situation. I am going to go, I'm going to put, I'm going to go to items 6 and 7. Item 6 and 7 is Chesapeake Bay area conservation plan, Alice Ferguson Foundation Hard Bargain Farm. Can you mute? Okay, and then, and then hold on a second. I'm going to make sure we have everyone that we need. Okay, we see Mr. Seaver's there.
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. Nate Foreman, are you on?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, I'm on.
Wonderful, there you are. Okay, Karen Miles? Karen Miles?
I am here.
Wonderful. Peter Soprano?
I am here.
Hakeem Wilson?
I'm here as well.
Okay, and Kevin Riley?
Madam Chair, Kevin Riley will not be able to make it to the hearing today.
Okay, okay, fine. But Site Resources is fully represented, okay. Okay, and that concludes my sign-up list. Mr. Seavers, you are on.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, I am Thomas Seaver, Senior Planner with the Zoning Section. Item number 6 and 7 on the agenda is a revision of site plan for, and revision to a conservation plan as well for Alice Ferguson Hard Bargain Farm, The application consists of a revision to remove a previously approved 12,240 square foot educational building and replace it with a 2,400 square foot or 60 by 40 open-air pavilion and associated parking modifications. Please note that a revision to the site plan was accepted because the proposed building and use are significantly less intensive than the original approval. Slide 2, please. The site is located in the southwestern part of Prince George's County within Planning Area 83 and Council District 9. Slide 3, please. More specifically, the site is located on the northeast and southwest sides of Bryan Point Road, approximately 2.4 miles west of Farmington Road. Slide 4, please. The site is located in the OS Open Space Zone and RCO Resource Conservation Overlay of the CBCA. The property is bound to the east by undeveloped land in the OS zone, to the south by Bryan Point Road, additional undeveloped land owned by the applicant and single-family residences in the OS zone, to the west by the Wagner Community Center and Pool in the OS zone, and to the north by Piscataway Park in the ROS Reserved Open Space Zone. Slide 5, please. The overlay map shows the portion of the site located within the CBCA Resource Conservation Overlay. Slide 6, please. The aerial photograph shows that the subject site contains numerous structures and outbuildings. Slide 7, please. The site map shows that the topography on the site is varied with a prominent central bluff. Slide 8, please. This slide shows the revisions made to the existing site plan. Revisions include the replacement of the educational building with a 2,400 square foot open-air pavilion, modifications to the circular drive, and the relocation and reduction of required parking spaces. Slide 9, please. This slide shows the revisions to the conservation plan. Slide 10, please. This slide shows the revisions to the buffer management plan. Slide 11, please. Lastly, this slide shows the final layout of the proposed revisions. In conclusion, the zoning staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings and approve Alice Ferguson Foundation/Hard Bargain Farm, ROSP-4663-02 and CP-10005-01, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Seavers. Let's see if there are any questions of you at this time. Okay, Madam Vice Chair?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Donner?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Foreman?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. My name is Nate Foreman. I'm an attorney with O'Malley, Miles, Nylund, and Gilmore. My office is in Greenbelt. I'd like to thank staff for their hard work and help on this project and would like to, bored to know that we are in agreement with staff's recommended conditions and would request that the planning board approve this project. I'm here with Karen Miles on behalf of the owner, Hakeem Wilson, and Kevin Soprano from Site Resources, and we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Foreman. And are you indicating that Ms. Miles, Mr. Soprano, and Mr. Wilson are here for questions only?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. So let's see if the board has any questions of anyone. Okay, Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, but it's always good to see the foundation. Alice, some of us had children who spent a lot of time there.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I second, I second Madam Commissioner Vice Chair Bailey's comments about the foundation.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Donner?
No questions, thanks.
So, okay, so there are no questions here. And, you know, and the farm really is very, very, very nice. And I remember, and the turkeys, I would just remember so much. It's just beautiful. It's just so quaint. It's a nice drive to get there, too.
Oh, yes.
And so is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve ROSP-4663-02 and CP-10005-01 along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report.
We have a motion, we have a motion from Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice, Vice Chair Bailey. Madam Vice Chair?
Vote A.
Commissioner Washington?
Vote A.
Commissioner Donner? Commissioner Geraldo?
Vote A, Madam Chair.
The Is had it 5-0, and I would just ask Mr. Foreman if you deliberately messed with Mr. Zhang's computer so that you could beat out Mr. Ship in order of cases today.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Madam Chair. You're fading out.
Yeah, I'm sure I am, okay. Good answer, good answer.
Thank you very much, have a great day.
Thank you so very much. Okay, we, I understand, can you mute me, Chris? Have our, we have some of our technical difficulties straightened out on this end, and some, and Mr. Zhang, I think you're straight, too. Okay, so we're going to go back to item 8, which was detailed site plan 14028-04, the University of Maryland Capital Region Medical Center. Mr. Zhang, you're on.
Okay. Okay. Madam Chair and members of the planning board, start with the... Next slide, please.
How far do you want him to go?
Next slide, please.
Right there?
You want me to start it if, I can, I can, yeah, I can just start it from here. Yeah, the subject site is in Planning Area 73, Council District 6. Next slide, please. The site is on the south side of Medical Center Drive, southeast corner, it's intersection with Human Drive, and as outlined in red on this slide. Next slide, please.
Okay.
The site is an NXT zone, which is mixed-use transportation oriented zone. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Yeah, this, the site also is within the development district overlay zone of the Largo Town Center Plan. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay, slide 7, okay, okay. I, okay, I can, I can, I can, okay. This, the site basically general leveled with the building already constructed. Next slide, please. Uh, next slide, please.
Mr. Zhang, it appears that when, when we're moving to the next slide, there's a delay when, when it shows up on your computer. So sometimes you may need to announce what the number of the slide that you want to see. Okay. Okay.
Okay, okay. This, this mass man roadway shows both the Medical Center Drive and road, tieral roadway. Next, please. This shows the site with the Largo Town Center Transit or Development Metro Station is right in the middle of the sites. Next slide, please. Slide number 10 basically shows the previously approved detailed site plan. You see the hospital building complex is in the middle of the site. Next slide, please. This is the site plan, signage plan, which shows the location of a different type of the signage.
Okay, the signage plan, okay. And Mr. Zhang?
This basically is a, yes. It's a comprehensive signage plan. We include all monumental sign and wayfinding signs and only one building mounted signs included in its detailed site. Next slide, please. This exhibit show the previously approved... This is the original plan, shows the main elevation of the hospital building. You see the signage on top of the building. Next slide, please. This signage, signage type plan would show what has been included in this application. Specifically, on the top are the three monumental sign, and then below are the small monumental sign and as well as the wayfinding sign, directional sign. Next slide, please. There are the three monumental sign. One is located at the, in the Medical Center Drive, so row. Next slide, please. And then the other two monumental sign, which located behind the park garage on the access road to emergency portion of... Next slide, please. This is the only building mounted signage proposed in this DSP, which will be located in the parking garage at the intersection of Losford Road and Medical Center Drive. Next slide, please. The following slides, 17 to 19, will be the sticker image for the proposed three monumental signage. Just keep going. And then, in order for those three monumental sign to be installed on this property, the applicant need to amend the signage design criteria of the development district overlay zone. And on page, staff report page 67, there is a detailed discussion on how the alternative signage will benefit the development while not substantially impaired the implementation of the Largo Town Center Sector Plan. Next slide, please. This will be the last slide show, which shows a couple of wayfinding sign, also slightly larger than permissible design standard. Staff also has a discussion on page, it of the staff report. Given the overall limited scope of this revision, previous finding regarding conformance with zoning ordinance, previous approval conditions, landscape menu, woodland, and wildlife habitat conservation ordinance, as well as tree canopy coverage ordinance will not be impacted. The finding was say valid and governing. No citizen opposition received during the review process and no agency opposed to the approval of this detailed site and limited to the comprehensive sign package. The Urban Design Section recommends that the planning board adopt the finding of this report, approved alternative free standings sign standards for three monumental sign, which are taller than the DDOZ standards, or two monumental sign, which has a size areas larger than the, than the... by the DDOZ standards. And then further approved detailed type plan, ESP 14028-04 for Prince George's County Regional Hospital, which current as University of Maryland Capital Region Medical Center, with one condition. This concludes the staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zhang. Let's see if there are any questions of you before I get to... Okay, somebody's talking. Okay. Before I get to Mr. Ship. So Madam Vice Chair?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Donner?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no questions, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ship?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, William Ship with Law Offices in Greenbelt. It's my pleasure to follow my newest partner, Nate Foreman.
Oh, it's a new partner. I was, I was wondering, we would have said that we would have made a big deal.
Yeah. He'll, he'll be back, don't worry.
Okay. But I do have a question for you. You know, when you get to it, you're probably going to explain it, because I'm looking at the signage on slide 12 and then slide 13, and I know we're changing names, so I hope you address that so everybody's really clear on, on Prince George's... Okay.
The name should be reflected, and Ms. Katz from the University of Maryland Medical System can comment, but it's the Capital Region Medical Center.
Okay.
The purpose of the graphics, obviously, is to show the design. We've been in draft for some time. Um, the purpose of the graphics obviously is to show the design. We've been in um draft for some time.
And then one was previously approved here. Okay, got it.
Yes, a- and I will say that at the outset, we completely agree with staff recommendations and proposed conditions. The uh approval of a signage package was actually delegated by the planning board to urban design staff in the original approval, but since we were asking for modification of some of the standards in the sector plan, everybody felt it was best to put it on an agenda. But I won't uh belabor going through it all, other than to say that this is a very important component of our race to the home stretch to get the hospital open, which is on schedule for June twelfth of this year. Uh, Laura is here uh primarily to to answer any questions in case you want an update on how it's going with the hospital. But the signage obviously is very important to uh implement the ability for people to find their way once they get there. The only other thing I would add is that um the signage package for the hospital does not in any way preclude our ability to work with the Largo Town Center Wayfinding uh task force, which is underway uh with park and planning. I've met, I've uh spoken with your staff on that and expressed that our client is more than willing to uh cooperate and find ways to incorporate any kind of wayfinding or or town center themed signage that comes in with the the town center. Uh, but obviously, we have to get ready to open and we need people to be able to find their way and not get confused, especially when they might be, you know, otherwise stressed or or emotionally um uh challenged, that they need to make sure they can get to the right place as quickly as possible. With that, I'm I'm ready to answer any questions you might have. I have David Vickel from Soltes and Laura Kouts from uh the University of Maryland Medical System.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ship. I'm gonna see if there any questions. I will tell you, I pass by all the time and I just marvel. And and I'm so excited. It's it's been a a long time coming and I'm so thrilled and I'm so thrilled for the residents of Prince George's County. We so deserve this and we're so excited. And to address, you know, I mean, it's it's gonna be a teaching hospital affiliated with the University of Maryland. It just doesn't get any better than that. And our residents truly deserve this. And I know this is about signage for today. But um we are excited and there may be questions about how it's coming along and and um so let's see right now if there's any questions, but you know, some of us just can't wait. Okay, Madam Vice Chair.
I agree, some of us can't wait and will be glad when it's there because some of us are having trouble driving and looking at the same time, but uh that's that's not the, that's not the hospital problem. That's some of us have short attention span and you're looking because you're so excited about seeing everything. But no, I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Washington.
No, uh, I
Commissioner Washington for a second. I'm going to speak everybody when one person's speaking because we were getting some feedback. Okay, Commissioner Washington.
No, I was just gonna associate myself with uh your comments as well as Vice Chair Bailey. Um, and I I too would like clarity on the um slides twelve and thirteen because I noticed that as well, and I guess that's gonna be addressed by the University of Maryland.
Yeah, I think, I think so. The one, one was what was already approved, number one. Number twelve was, yeah, but but I'd love to hear, we'll hear from them as well because I'm I'm sure we're anxious to hear from them. Did you have any other questions, Commissioner Washington?
I did not, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Donner.
Yeah, no, excited to see um this facility come underway and and good work on on getting all the way through. Um, the one just comment, not not a question or anything, but just the comment is to be careful with um internal signage and making sure that it's bilingual. Um, I I have the unfortunate experience of having spent about seven months out of the last year and a half or so in hospitals. Um, and I'm over and over again, um Latino folks who were in the hospitals not being able to find um where they're trying to go, even though the words are fair, there there's a lot of cognates in most of these words. But even so, they they had trouble kind of locating that. Just kind of adds stress to their their situations when they're already in there. Um, so to an extent interior that you can provide bilingual or other kind of um services that would be very helpful, I think.
Good point. And Commissioner Geraldo.
I agree with so and share in the comments of all the other commissioners and I just think it's it's a long time that we have, we'll have social equity with regards to Maryland and Prince George's County.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so um uh, Mr. Ship, is there someone that you would prefer to speak right now at this point, would be Ms. Katz?
Well, I I don't want to throw Laura on the bus on this. If you want to pull up slide twelve and thirteen, we could look at it and and maybe I can comment on um what you observed.
Bill, I'd be happy to answer their questions.
Okay, it's a little harder when you're not sitting right next to each other to to look at your client and say, are you okay with that?
Mr. Ship, Mr. Ship, it's Women's History Month. She's got this.
Okay, oh, she's got it. I know that.
I know. Absolutely. Um, thank you very much uh for all your comments. I really appreciate uh all the wonderful things you've said about the hospital. Um, the name change uh is related to um a process that we go through every time we acquire a new hospital. Uh, we like our hospitals to reflect the region that they are in. So for instance, when we purchased Anorundal Commu- uh uh Medical Center, its name changed to Baltimore Washington Medical Center.
Okay.
Uh, similarly with Midtown, um, we changed the name to U M M C Midtown Campus. It had been Maryland General. Likewise, with several of our other hospitals. So that was the reason for the name change. Um, I will say originally, um Prince George's Medical Center was simply a placeholder. We knew the name would change. We didn't know what it would be. This made sense. Um, so it was always our intention to come back with a new name um and show you how we landed on Capital Region Medical Center.
Okay, wonderful.
So one comment regarding the internal wayfinding as well. Um, we have established all of the wayfinding signs. Um, they have, they are written in English, but every sign has an international symbol associated with uh that service. So for example, the imaging department has a a picture of an X-ray and it's a very simple, you know, a drawing, a diagram of what it is that we're talking about. Um, but it serves as sort of uh the an easy methodology for any language to understand where it is they're heading. Also at the front desk, we'll have printed out copies of what the symbols mean in various languages. So if they see that X-ray and they don't understand what that means, you can pick up a little piece of paper that identifies the name in your language. If that makes sense.
Thank you. Let's see if there are any questions of you. I'll start with uh Mr. Donner, Commissioner Donner, who asked the question.
No, I think that's great because it's not just Hispanics that are um here. Like, there is a lot of Middle Eastern folks as well, um, walking around the hospitals and stuff and and I think the international symbols is is the way to go. Um, you probably need to have plenty of translators on on call, but um, good luck. I hope that this is really successful, that the level of care is 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 great that this hospital is gonna be bringing. I'm very excited about that.
Thank you very much. And I'll tell you, the inside is even more beautiful than the exterior.
Wonderful. Okay, so let's see, um, Commissioner Bailey, I mean Vice Chair Bailey, do you have any questions? You're muted. He's muted.
I see.
Okay.
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Washington.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo.
No questions and welcome to Prince George's County.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so um there you have enthusiasm from our board and let's see if we can translate that into a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve the alternate development district standard A one as outlined in staff's report, in addition to approving D S P dash one four zero two eight dash zero four, along with the associated condition as outlined in staff's report.
Second. We have a motion from Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Um, Madam Vice Chair.
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington.
Vote aye.
Commissioner Donner.
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
Vote aye, Madam Chair.
And the ayes have it um unanimously. So way to go. We can't wait. Now I'm gonna keep driving by.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could um uh make one comment of uh question and one matter of privilege. Um, we're trying to get these signs moving, so I certainly appreciate staff's help and I know they're working on a resolution. We hope that could get back to you pretty quickly.
Oh, we have our planner right here and she's hearing and we'll, done, consider it done.
And then the ma- the matter of privilege, I mentioned that Mr. Foreman was our newest partner, but actually there are two other uh additional partners uh that are very appropriate for uh Women's History Month. Um, we've got Kate Pruitt and and also our very own Stephanie Anderson, who are also become partners with the firm.
Wonderful, wonderful. So wonderful. Well, you know what? Please extend our very best to all three. And I wish I had known that when when Mr. Foreman was on and and hopefully he was watching during your case, but we'll see. And please extend our best to all of them. And a special shout out to um Stephanie, who was our former Prince George's County Attorney.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, great, yeah, thank you. And um we're going to continue on. We're gonna proceed in um in this manner. We're gonna go with item five. Um, and then item ten, nine, and three A. So item five, I'm gonna make sure, oh, and I was remiss in not announcing before for our second half. We announced him in the beginning, but we do have our principal counsel with us as well, David Warner. Okay. Um, so item five is the M R mandatory referral two one zero one F uh Bureau of Engraving and Printing Replacement. Let's check and make sure we have everyone. Ms. Ose.
Present.
Wonderful. Charles Davis. The Bureau of Engraving, wonderful. Uh, Joseph uh Ruko, I I know I'm messing it up.
Oh, you did, did great. Present, thank you.
Okay, so do you want to pronounce it for me one time, just to make sure?
Sure, Ruko.
Oh, it is Ruko. Okay, there we go. Uh, I'm gonna mess it up again. Helga.
Westgate.
Westgate, okay.
I I I respond to anything that's close. Yes, Helga West.
Okay, okay, thank you. Maryland Department of Commerce. Um, Loveland Perkins.
Yes, I'm present.
Vansville Heights Citizens Association. Um, those are our proponents, our opponents. We have Holly Simmons from the city of Greenbelt. Holly Simmons. I can come back to you. We have, um, I I I know I saw Terry Ruby.
Yes, here, thank you.
City of Greenbelt, do you happen to know if Ms. Simmons is on?
Uh, she, what she is on, so maybe she's having audio. I'll check with her. Thank you.
Um, Melissa Dastin, West Laurel Civic Association. Okay, I don't see her name on there. We're going down of the list, okay. So we also have four exhibits. We have um three proponent exhibits. We have one from the Vansville Citizens Association. It will be proponents exhibit number one. We have a letter from the Maryland Department of Commerce of support. That would be proponents exhibit number two. And then we have um a letter from Karen Coakley. That would be proponents exhibit number three. And then we have a a an opponent, opposing letter from the West Laurel Citizens Association. That would be opponents exhibit number one. Okay, and with that, um, I'm gonna try one more time for Holly Simmons.
She's gonna try to call in. She's having a difficulty. No worries.
And Melissa Dastin. Okay, well, all right, so let's go with um Ms. Ose. We're ready for you.
Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. I'm Christina Ose, Countywide Planning Division. Item five is the proposed Bureau of Engraving and Printing uh project mandatory for application number two, one zero one F by the United States Department of the Treasury. Before I get into this slide presentation, I just have a brief background context so that we can have get the flow of the presentation. The application is a referral from the National Capital Planning Commission under the procedures of intergovernmental cooperation in federal planning in the national capital region. The project site results from a twenty-year planning process by the Department of the Treasury to address deficiencies at the current facility in Washington, D.C. and modernize current printing operations. The existing Washington, D.C. facility was built in nineteen fourteen. The project goal was to relocate a new facility on large parcel of land with direct access to existing highways and aviation network, such as a one oh five acre at the Belsville Agricultural Research Center. The Bureau currently operates two facilities, one in downtown D.C. and another in Texas, Fort Worth, Texas, and a warehouse in Landover, Maryland. The new facility will replace the existing facility in Washington, D.C. B E P current operations is supported by administrative and security functions approximately one thousand six hundred full-time staff. About sixty-five percent of those employees reside in the state of Maryland and forty-five percent live in Prince George's County. The planning department has been involved with this project since two thousand nineteen. We participated in public scoping meetings, reviewed the draft environmental impact statement and the draft transportation impact study. Slide two, please. The site is located in northern portion of the county, planning area sixty-two, council district one. It is not within any municipality. Slide three. Please. The site is in the reserved open space zone as the rest of the Belsville Agricultural Center campus. Slide four, please. The site is part of the two hundred acre central poultry farm that was a thriving uh a previously thriving poultry research farm. It is bounded to the north by Odell Road, to the south by Powder Mill Road, and surrounded by other back facilities. Poultry Road runs north south through the side from Odell Road and connects to Powder Mill Road. As you can see, the site is the one highlighted in red. Slide five, please. This is the existing condition on the side. As we see a partial view, there are twenty-three buildings on the side. Poultry Road, as you can see, runs through the side from Odell Road north to Powder Mill Road to the south. Twenty-two of the twenty-three buildings will be demolished and the other one will be relocated in another area on the back campus. The wildlife office is the only actively used building on the side. Portions of the one oh five acre are crockland, forest, pasture, wetlands, two surface parking lots, and paved and unpaved roads. Approximately forty-five acres of the one oh five acres will be used for the new facility. Next slide. The proposed transportation improvement study I mentioned in the previous study that our staff participated in in twenty uh twenty shows twenty, fifteen intersections were evaluated. And I walked through a little bit on the colors. The blue circle intersections are the ones that do not have traffic lights. The ones in red are the ones that do have traffic lights. And the side is hatched in yellow, right south of Odell Road. There's a yellow hatch right, and that's it. That's the side with poultry road showing running through Odell, which is the road north of the site. And further than you will see Powder Mill Road runs to number ten, which is the red, as a south connection road. Powder Mill, yes, that's it, number ten. So out of the fifteen intersections, seven were identified for mitigation for improvements as outlined in here, two oh one, uh Maryland two oh one, Sunny Avenue, South Maryland two oh one, Beaver uh Beaver Dam and Maryland two oh one, Powder Mill Road. One of the concerns that we have with this project at staff level is that the seven intersections at the information that was provided to us for review did not contain preliminary design for the seven intersection. The applicant may be able to explain that later, but we're told that this may come later in the project development, in the later phases of the project development. Uh, as you can see, our number three is shown as a preliminary design mentioned before. We do not have preliminary design to have commented on the seventeen, on the seven intersections that are identified on the slide that I just discussed. The next slide, please. At the environment of future, the site contains wetlands, streams, and woodlands. The Maryland Department of the Environment and the Corps of Engineers will be addressing all the environmental uh sensitive area impact on the site as were identified in the environmental impact study. Next slide, please. As you can see that the environmental impact study has provided guidance for the applicant to begin to isolate some of the sensitive areas that need to be addressed before the development proceeds. And this slide shows the sensitive area that will be looked into as the development falls into place. As I mentioned earlier, the only 45 acres will be disturbed and used for the development for the new facility, and the rest of the site will be mitigated to address all the sensitive environmental areas as shown on the slide. Next slide, please. Slide nine. Okay. This side shows the transportation right away, which is how one of the meets one of the goals for the project, to locate the site within access to existing transportation. So I will be able to walk through the poultry road. The area is shown in blue and poultry road is shown running in the middle. North of that is Odell Road, which runs north of the project site. South of that, you have the green stem running, which is a collector road, Powder Mill Road. And then on the west side, which is Edmundston Road, on the west side of the site in red, is Edmundston Road. So the these intersection projects, the evaluation of the seven intersections that I discussed earlier, are part of what fall into the right away evaluation that need to take place further as the design is be able to unveil, and we will know exactly how the design of those seven will fall into place to be able to give the access that it needs to this site when development commences. Next slide. This is an illustrative site plan, and I just want to back up and say something. The information received for this project was at concept, site, and design level. It did not contain enough information for us to make a comprehensive review. So in my recommendation, I'll be making a request that will ask for second review referral from the NCPC. So the illustrative plan just shows that the BAP will have a primary building approximately 1 million square feet along with series of successive control buildings on the side. And you can see it has, let's go on the west side. The west has west bums that show, yeah, west of the side, you have a south parking area next to that, which is shown on as an arrow. And then you have a truck screening site, which comes either closer to entrance. The visitor also screening area on the east of the side, staff screening area, a ring road, an east parking area, and an emergency entrance. This side reflects what the main building would be, but we know that there will be other buildings to decide to be able to contend 100, the 1,600 employees. So the entry side that shows the three access for visitor, employee, and tours relate to the main entrance at Powder Mill Road, which is a subject of discussion that we did not have a design that outlines how this entryway to the site will be thought had in at that main entrance on Powder Mill Road. Next slide. This slide again highlights what is discussed under the illustrative site plan shows the three access into the area, which is a truck circulation, the staff circulation, and the tour circulation. All of this will feature into the visitor entry area, which also directly relates to the Powder Mill Road main entrance. Next slide, please. This slide shows the exterior building wall, a pedestrian path, and as well as part of portions of the south parking area. Next slide. This is a north view of the side of the build of the main building, of course, with an institutional sign that says the Bureau of Engraving. Next slide. This slide shows that the BEP project will be designed to be in harmony with existing agricultural setting to minimize impact to the surrounding area while supporting a highly efficient, modern currency facility. The next slide. This also highlights the same goal, to be able to have the main building flush and with the existing agricultural area within BAC. Next slide. This slide shows the BAC property shown in yellow. And the northern side, portion of the slide shows Odell Road, and the closest community is Advancedville Community. So we made a decision at staff level, given the extensive outreach that was done by the applicant in 2019 and 2020, to be able to send notifications to the closest community to the site. And north, and the north of the site was Advancedville Community. A notice was sent to them early last month, and we did not receive any information from or inquiries from that community, and we presume that they were satisfied with the project. The applicant's information was inscribed in a notice as well as my contact information as well. Next slide, please. This is the outreach that the applicant has been engaged with from 2019 to 2021. As I mentioned earlier, our staff has been involved with this project from the beginning. As you can see, on October 2029, the Advancedville Community held a town hall meeting with Councilmember Donogo to go over the project. And we believe that we did not receive inquiry because probably they were satisfied with what was presented to them in 2019. The, in February 2020, you can see that NCPC and BAC, we are coordinating meetings to discuss exactly how the site will be developed. And that's how the resulted referral was sent to us for review early in January. Next slide. The site is a multi-year, multi-phased, multi-team complex project. It has several moving parts that is being dealt with at different stages of the development. The second bullet shows that, as I mentioned earlier, we are the concept stage, and we did not have enough information. And the applicant and the design team did agree that this is the phase where they are. They're still evaluating exactly where the siding of the buildings will be located in order to move to the next stage for preliminary design. So the complexity of the project lends itself to be where they are at this point, and as I mentioned earlier, staff will be requesting the board to approve our recommendation asking the referral agency, NCPC, for the project to be referred to us at a preliminary design stage, which would give us a full review of the site, the location of the buildings, all the amenities on the side, both entrances, and hopefully the seven intersections that are being recommended in the transportation study improvement. Next slide. This is the project schedule again that highlights the complexity and the multiphase of the project. The blue line in the middle shows that we are at the concept design phase. As I mentioned earlier, not enough information has been generated in terms of the building design, deciding on other buildings on the side, the amenities on the side, the entrances to the side, the fencing, the gates, the guardhouses, all that. They don't have it at this point. They're showing that they by, they will have 60%, 65% design at some point. Again, it falls into our request to be able to review the plan, the site at 60, 35% or higher. That will have all the information we need to be able to comprehensively review this application. As you can see on this slide, it's a nine-year project process from 2020 to 2029. And it will take two years to relocate everyone from Washington DC into the new building once the building is built. Next slide, please. There are permitting agencies that will review the development as in most indifferent faces. As I mentioned earlier, all the environmental issues and sensitive areas on the side will be reviewed by the Maryland Department of the Environment and the Corps of Engineers. That would include the demolishing of the existing buildings that were used for poultry research. And of course, the Maryland Historical Trust is also looking at impacts on historical resources and cultural issues. The Washington Suburban Commission is looking at water access from Odell Road. Currently today, a portion of the site is in category six, which does not allow water and sewer connection to the site. So they are requesting a waiver at this point to be able to get access from Odell Road connection to get public water into the site. Even though BAC does have its own water, but it's well water, and we know that the Bureau of Engraving, we need a lot of water in its production facility in the main building. So that process is on the work now. The Prince George's County Public Works will be able to provide access point permits for both Odell and Powder Mill Road. Next slide. As mentioned earlier, we received information at concept design for the site and the building and didn't have enough information to be able to go a comprehensive review, as mentioned, discussed earlier. We're asking 35% design to be, of the project to be referred to us by NCPC. We notified NCPC staff in early mid-January to inform them of the need for second review. And which will address the site design, the building design, the layout of the buildings, amenities on the side, and the both entrances as well as the main entrance. The emergency access at Odell Road north of the project site and the seven entrances improvement, intersection improvements identified in the transportation improvement study. And so therefore, staff is requesting the board to approve the request for a second referral of the proposed BEP project and transmit the staff report to NCPC. This concludes staff presentation, and I'll be glad to answer any questions from the board. Thank you.
Okay, take a deep breath. Thank you, Ms. O'Shea. Appreciate it. It's a very thorough presentation as well. So, and it was a lot. And so let's see if we have questions at this point in time. Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, very thorough presentation, and I'm still processing it, so I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Washington.
No questions, but thank you, Ms. O'Shea.
Okay, Commissioner Dorner.
No questions. Thank you.
And Commissioner Geraldo.
Ms. O'Shea, thank you for your thorough presentation, but I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'm just gonna go down this list of speakers. And one thing you said, Ms. O'Shea, you said at the time, we hadn't heard from Vansville, but we have heard from the Vansville Citizens Association now. Now, they have submitted a letter in support. But I'm gonna go down the list of people who have signed up to speak. I'm gonna start with Charles Davis from the Bureau of Engraving and Printing. If you wish to speak when I call your name, please start speaking. If you only wish to say you're here for questions only, feel free as well. So, Mr. Davis.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chairman and Members of the Board. I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of our leadership team at the Bureau of Printing. We're happy and pleased to introduce you to a project that has both domestic and international economic implications. You know, the Bureau, the Bureau, we produce, we're not the mint. We produce the cash currency, the world's most recognizable bank note. And, you know, as part of that, we have to ensure that it remains the most possible and most secure bank note in the world. And so as part of our effort to stay ahead of emerging counterfeit threats, the Bureau is in the process of implementing a congressionally authorized program to modernize our facilities and production capabilities. The Bureau, you know, as, as you've already heard, we've been operating out of our existing District of Columbia facility for more than 100 years, and over the past 20 years, we've been looking at how those facilities could support the future redesign of currency that is currently in the process of design. And what we found is unfortunately, our multi-story, very aging facilities cannot support the increasingly complex production processes that are required to support new currency designs. And, you know, we looked at, we looked at potentially renovating our downtown facilities. We've done multiple studies on that and and it found that it's just not feasible. And that was also validated by the Government Accountability Office, which is kind of the gold standard for planning, you know, planning and oversight of executive agencies, executive level agencies. And so because of that, we're looking at implementing a hybrid solution, facility solution, where we keep our headquarters functions in our existing facility downtown and relocate our production capabilities and our research and development branches and offices and responsibilities to a more secure, smaller, more efficient facility elsewhere in the national capital region. We've studied multiple locations within the national capital region. We didn't just stumble upon BAC. It was part of a overall multi-year review of both private and federally owned properties. We eventually settled upon federally owned facilities because of the different guidance that we received from, from the executive level offices, OMB, and, you know, different, different planning agencies that really want us to reutilize existing federal properties to the greatest extent possible. And so we evaluated these multiple facilities. We had a certain criteria that we went down that's described in the draft EIF that was published just a few months ago. And ultimately, in coordination with the Department and partnership with the United States Department of Agriculture, we recommended moving forward with an analysis of a previously developed site that USDA no longer requires. That research is no longer required at BAC, and the site has already been previously developed. It's not a greenfield site. And so we, we pushed forward with an analysis on, on that site. And then in 2018, Congress agreed and provided authority for USDA to transfer this property to the Department for the specific purpose of this facility, of new production currency facility. And so that's where we are at this point, where we have begun design. As you can see, we're, and have heard, we are in the concept stage. And I, you know, we just want you all to know that the Bureau understands and is committed to protecting to the extent possible, the historic and environmental features associated with construction of this facility at this site. We've conducted numerous stakeholder outreach activities over the past several years in order to understand the public's concerns associated with this potential project. And we believe our design team is in the process of implementing multiple sustainability initiatives within the building design that will not only benefit the Bureau's production process, our employees, but also the public at large. So with that, I'm open to answering any questions from the board, and thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Davis. And that was actually a very thorough explanation that, that I found beneficial anyway and helpful to understand. So let's see if the other board members have any questions. Have you, Ms. Bailey?
No question.
Okay, Commissioner Washington.
No questions.
Commissioner Dorner.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay. So thank you. So Joseph Ruko.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. And thanks, Chuck, for your explanation. Just to emphasize a couple of minor points on the sustainability aspects of this design. We designed several large, secure facilities for our federal government, and institutional identity is very important. And we have a very firm understanding of the historic nature of this site. And the guiding principle from day one established by BEP leadership was to integrate the program into this pastoral setting, as you saw in the one aerial image that Christine showed you. On the sustainability side, what's interesting about this is there is going to be a photovoltaic array on the building, which will actually contribute towards approximately 40% of the total power energy requirements of this facility, which is very unique. The other attribute is to integrate the project into the natural setting. We're actually increasing the tree canopy by approximately 37 acres of additional tree canopy, once they're fully mature, to further protect the environment. So it's a very responsive program to the environment. The other thing too is we really do believe that as you drive along the perimeter of these public roads, be it Powder Mill Road, Edmundston Road, or Odell Road, you will not see the facility because it is so low within the landscape. On the western elevation, as Christine Um, on the western elevation, as Christine pointed out, we have those earth berms. From the top of a berm to the top of that building, it's only fifteen feet. And, you know, the homes along Odell to the top of the roof is, you know, they're approximately twenty-five feet. So we're being very uh uh methodical and thoughtful about how we integrate this uh building into the natural environment. And so with that, um, I I thank you for the opportunity to uh to support this project.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Ruko. Appreciate it. Um, I'm gonna turn to the board. Questions? Madam Vice Chair.
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Washington.
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Donner.
No questions. Um, but thank you for pointing out the uh solar array. That that's fantastic to see um that kind of renewable energy being put into place um to make it more sustainable development.
Thank. And then um Commissioner Geraldo.
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Hego Weshke, Maryland Department of Commerce. Weshke.
Yeah, very good.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Yeah, no, hey, that's better than most. Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the Planning Board. I represent the Maryland Department of Commerce, and we submitted a letter for record, and I'm going to outline what that says. I'm the Director of Federal Business Relations for the Office of Military and Federal Affairs. I thank you for the opportunity to express our support of the Bureau of Engraving and Printing's proposal to locate the replacement currency production facility on the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center campus. Okay, so Maryland has over sixty federal facilities and twelve major military bases, with that also have hundreds and hundreds of defense agencies. My office's role is to support, grow, and advocate for and partner with our federal and military agencies. Just a few examples here in the county is the IRS Census Bureau, NOAA, and Joint Base Andrews. They employ thousands, thousands. Bringing the sixteen hundred highly skilled jobs will significantly impact Prince George's County, the region, and the state's economy. Construction of the new technologically advanced currency production operation versus the renovation of an aged facility will result in a cost savings of six hundred million dollars to the taxpayers. Also, as mentioned before, the Department of Treasury and the Bureau have a commitment to green development and the design of a sustainable facility. Construction of the building is expected to employ approximately sixteen hundred, I'm sorry, seventeen hundred construction workers, resulting in the estimated total earnings of a hundred and five million over the life of the construction project. These sixteen hundred employees will have an average salary of ninety-nine thousand dollars per employee, resulting in a total earnings of nearly sixteen million dollars annually. And as mentioned, with sixty-five percent of the current workforce residing in Maryland and forty-three living in Prince George's County, these workers will certainly benefit by the relocation of this facility. These employees will also have a positive impact on the local economy, as there are two thousand retailers with twenty-five thousand employees within a five-mile radius of Bark. Now, Maryland's support on this project started quite a while ago, in twenty-eighteen, when Governor Hogan wrote and to the key congressional leadership to encourage passage of the bills to authorize the transfer of the land and for the construction of currency production facility on the Bark campus, as Charles mentioned earlier. And in twenty-nineteen, the Maryland Secretary Kelly Schultz sent the letter of support during the early scoping process. And then last November, Governor Hogan again expressed his support of the relocation during the draft environmental impact statement comment period. So, as you can see, the location of the Bureau of Engraving and Printing Production Facility in Prince George's County will substantially impact the economy. And the governor recognizes this impact and has encouraged it from the beginning and will encourage it from going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weshke. Okay, um, I appreciate it. And then I'm gonna keep going down my list. Um, we then had Lovelene Perkins from the Vansville Heights Citizens Association.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Prince George's Planning Board. My name is Lovelene D. Perkins. Today, I am honored uh to speak to you on behalf of Mr. John Perkins, President of the Vansville Heights Citizens Association Incorporated. He is, of course, unable to be here today, so I'm speaking on his behalf and the Vansville uh community. Vansville High Citizens Association is a historic community in Prince George's County, and for statistical purposes, Vansville is part of the Beltsville Census Designated Place. Vansville, Maryland was officially designated as a historical site by the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission on January thirtieth, nineteen seventy-three. You may ask, why is this a significant? It is significant because the Vansville community historical marker is located, excuse me, located at Odell Road and Old Baltimore Pike, which is within one block of the Beltsville Agriculture Research Research Center in Bark, and also very, very close to Poetry Road. This is where the Bureau of Engraving and Printing will house this new facility that's scheduled to relocate from downtown DC. Therefore, we have a vested interest in the planning and recommendations that will impact our community and surrounding communities. At the last meeting of the Vansville Heights Citizens Association, we unanimously agreed and will welcome the Bureau of Engraving and Printing to the historic Vansville Beltsville community. The Vansville High Citizens Association is welcoming of the Bureau of Engraving with the understanding that they will work hand in hand with minimum impact to the community they will be a part of. We've met with several representatives of the BE P project, and most recently with Mr. Chuck Davis from the Facility Project Management Office. He and his team feel that they have a great respect and an interest in maintaining our historic area with a desire to develop a good community working relationship. Additionally, we are encouraged that a great deal of the landscape will remain and also will be enhanced. BEP will reach out to the community for opportunities to share in the actual work they do. Offering training and job opportunities will also be available. However, we are not naive, and we've discussed and shared our concerns of increased traffic with an already overwhelmed road system. With the influx of new and additional employees, traffic will increase, no matter the number of various working shifts you may have. Therefore, monitoring of the traffic during the planning stages should be done at peak traffic hours and not off hours. Other areas for continual review are managing hazardous materials, the air quality, and proper use of the land, just to name a few. We are asking for a continual review of plans for specific infrastructure improvement for several major roadways in our area that will be critically impacted, including but not limited to Edmundston Road, Odell Road, which is currently just a a very small two-lane highway, Old Baltimore Pike, Powder Mill Road, and Sunnyside Avenue. We are hopeful that our neighboring communities will be as eager to receive the Bureau of Engraving into our area, finding substance and broadening our old and new mutual needs. Vansville Citizens Heights Association Incorporated are encouraged, supportive, and look forward to many opportunities to discuss this project in the very early stages of its progression. There are still many facets to be finalized, and we want the very best for our community. Thank you so much for this time to share.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Um, let's see if there are any questions of you at this time. Um, Madam Vice Chair.
No questions, but I certainly do thank Ms. Perkins for her presentation.
Um, Commissioner Washington.
No questions, but thank you, Ms. Perkins.
Commissioner Donner.
No questions. Thank you.
Um, and Commissioner Geraldo.
Perkins, I have no questions, but I thank you so much for coming before the board.
Thank you. I think the board has a lot of, I mean, this was determined a historic um community back in um the seventies. I think you said that nineteen seventy-four by this commission. None of us were here working for this mission back then. But um, but we are, many of us are familiar with the Vansville area, and it is, I mean, it is a source of pride for us in in Prince George's County. And I remember, so remember the Coles, um, and Walter Coley and and how how much they championed the Vansville area as well as so um, um, we we do have a, we do um recognize the importance of your historic nature and and um vigilance of your community. Um, so now, okay, so I do have other folks who have signed up to speak, so I'm gonna turn to them as well. I'm gonna start with um Holly Simmons from the City of Greenbelt. Oh, is that the, is she, was she on? Did we work that out, or I could turn to Ms. Ruby. Let's see if she's on first. Ms. Simmons.
I I am, I'm present. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Wonderful. Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, Holly Simmons, Community Planner with the City of Greenbelt. I'm speaking on behalf of the Greenbelt City Council, which voted in opposition to this project and which will be submitting a letter outlining the city's concerns shortly. The city believes this industrial facility would not conform to the R O S purpose or uses and would undermine established planning policies at the county level whose intent is to prioritize the preservation of prime agricultural land. The city finds that the project is in direct conflict with the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center nineteen ninety-six master plan, which states, "The Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission has recognized the importance of Bark as a scenic, low-density oasis that has, by its function, been spared from development pressures and has recommended a continuation of that existing character in its regional planning efforts." Further, the project site is located within the county's priority preservation area, growth tier four, the Plan twenty thirty-five rural and agricultural policy area, and the sub-region one master plan rural tier. In summary, the city believes the project will have significant adverse impacts on Bark, the human, natural environment, transportation, and the surrounding community. Thank you for this opportunity to comment and to reaffirm the city's opposition to citing of this development on Bark.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Simmons. We appreciate it. Um, now, Ms. Ruby's gonna speak. I'm gonna hold questions since both of you are representing the city of 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 Greenbelt. So I'm gonna turn to Ms. Ruby and then turn to the board to see if they have any questions of either of you, if she's gonna cite the city's position as well. Ms. Ruby?
Yes, I'll be, I'll be brief, since Ms. Simmons already indicated that the city is opposed to this project. We believe that as an industrial use, it is just not uh in conformance with any master plan or any recommendations from Mark Bark or the mission of of Bark, and we have significant concerns about that. We always spent um a tremendous amount of time identifying adverse impacts that this project will have on the environment, on traffic, and we believe the neighborhoods surrounding it as well as the community of Greenbelt. And we will be sharing that information um with your staff. We would like to ask that in in the future um that your your staff engage the city as it's does future reviews, if you will, of this project. Unfortunately, we found out about this meeting uh really just in time to sign up the the two of us to speak. Um, so we were not, we're not able to provide detailed comments to your staff, but we do have them, and we will be doing that. And we uh will be submitting testimony at at the uh NCPC hearing, um, both written and verbal, and we'll share that with your staff as well. I would like, with the board's permission, just to recognize that if he's here um in attendance, um Councilmember Rodney Roberts, um, who hoped to join us today, and unfortunately, like I indicated, we weren't notified of the meeting, so I just wanna recognize him if he was here, because we were not able to sign him up.
Okay, but let me ask this. You you can note that he's here, but I can't have, he is precluded from speaking now because he did not sign up by our deadline. So um I, we're we're precluded from doing that at this juncture, but we, with all due respect, we do recognize um the councilman, um, who we, who's been a councilman for a good while. So we, I have had lots of experience with him and and appreciate and value.
Thank you. And just in conclusion, we would, we would like to ask that the Planning Board join the city in Greenbelt in its opposition of this project for the reasons that Ms. Simmons and myself stated. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Ruby. I need to um go back to um Ms. Osay for a second because I'm looking at the staff report, and it says there was an acceptance mailing on February fifth, twenty twenty-one. Was, did, did um the city of Greenbelt go overlooked, or would you know whether um, can you tell, discuss this?
We didn't, we looked at the um, we decided to mail just about joining property owners. Um, the two-mile radius was, it put them outside the area based on the adjacent.
Right, okay, because I I I see where it is, right? Okay, because Powder Mill Road, Beltsville, okay, got it. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I do have um another speaker. Uh, well, let's see if if our board has any members of, any questions of Ms. Simmons or Ms. Ruby from the City of Greenbelt. Um, Madam Vice Chair.
No questions, but I would like to thank both of them for coming before us today.
Okay, um, Commissioner Washington.
Uh, no questions, but my thanks as well.
Commissioner Donner.
I want to thank Bethany for for coming. Um, sorry that we didn't necessarily get you involved, but you will be involved going forward um for any other subsequent work because you've signed up um for for this particular case. Um, I, the one question I did want to know is whether or not the the property itself is actually within the the tax authority jurisdiction of this. I know you don't tax federal government, but whether or not it actually lies within the city's legal boundaries. Um, because sometimes we get cities that are that are really close, they just don't, that that voice opposition or support, um, but the properties don't let, don't technically lie within the legal authority.
Uh, Ken, can you go back to slide that shows the Vansville community? I'm not sure what slide is that. Okay, this one. Um, the 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 project area is not within a municipality, is not even close. And so when we look at the two-mile radius that we do the mailing, it really did not come up. It didn't come up as one of the municipality to be able to reach out to.
Yeah, something that's, that's not exactly what I'm asking about. Um, it's a totally different question. Like, you could draw a radius around anything. Um, and and like, you could draw a radius around the downtown area of Hyattville where I live, and you're not gonna get places that are within a two-mile radius because Hyattville goes up in in really kind of crazy directions. Um, what I was wanting to know was whether or not, if if this parcel was not in and and being developed by um the Bureau of Engraving, if it was, say, a private parcel, would it, would the tax authority, the legal taxing jurisdiction be the city of of Greenbelt? Um, because that, that, that does in impact whether or not it would have authority or kind of input in this process. If it's no, we still appreciate the concerns. If it's yes, then then we should, we should also kind of keep them in the loop as well.
Well, it's not within any municipality, including the city of Greenbelt.
So the answer would be no. Oh, okay.
Yeah, that would be nothing. Thank you.
Um, was that it for you, Commissioner Donner?
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Geraldo.
I have no questions, Madam Chair. Thank you for everybody who presented.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, so is Melissa Dastin on? I called her name a couple of times earlier, and I don't see anyone who's signed in just by phone. Sorry, she's not on here. Okay. Um, well, let me say this, too. We also have um uh letters. Um, we, as I indicated, we, the Vansville Citizens Association has spoken. We have um, um, Ms. Weshke, Weshke from the Maryland Department of Commerce, and we have the letter for of support from Karen Cokely in Beltsville. Um, it's an individual letter, not on behalf of the Beltsville Association. And also, we have an opponent's uh letter from the the West Law Citizens Association. And I wanted to, I, in reading the letters, I wanted to get to the um one um comment in the West Law letter, which is signed by um Ms. Dastin. And um, she, she mentions in the letter that the planning staff has taken a position that the federal government does not have to abide by the Prince George's County zoning ordinance. It's, and I, and I feel that we have to address that because it's not a mere taking a position. It, I, you know, it's my understanding, if I recall, it's the law, but I will turn to um our Principal Counsel, David It, I, you know, it's my understanding, if I recall, it's the law, but I will turn to, um, our Principal Counsel, David Warner, to address that comment for, for clarity, for purposes of clarity.
Oh, sure. Thank you, uh, Madam Chairman, David Warner, Principal Counsel. Uh, no, you're correct. Um, the, uh, the state's authority to, to impose zoning and subdivision regulations, um, is limited to the state's jurisdiction, and that's where we, the commission and the county, get any authority at all it has to zone and regulate, uh, zone and subdivide property. So, uh, we don't have the authority to zone and subdivide or impose zoning and subdivision controls on federal property. But, uh, we do have a process that requires, uh, property owners such as the federal government to go through this process they're going through right now, which is mandatory referral, where we nonetheless do review, um, these development applications, uh, provide our recommendation. Um, ultimately, they can choose not to go with our recommendation, but this process is a means for the public to have input on a project, and it's oftentimes very productive in getting to a final development, uh, that is, uh, maybe better than it would have been without this process.
Thank you. And, and so this mandatory referral process is also a preacher of state law, um, under the land use article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. And, and I think that, um, you're so right in that in terms of that, any applicant such as the federal government in this instance, they do not have to abide by our recommendations. But it is, it does offer the citizens an opportunity, and, and it gives them something to think about, to weigh our recommendations because we have so much experience in this, in this area. Um, so, so the process, um, some people ask sometimes, "Well, why bother if no one has to listen to you?" They don't, they have to refer to us, but they don't have to abide by it. But if people are fair-minded and open-minded, they will want to hear what our comments are, at least weigh them. And so that's why we engage in this process. Um, and furthermore, whatever recommendation we make, it will be transmitted to the National Capital Planning Commission. Well, I know Mr. Acosta well, the executive director, and I would think that the, the National Capital Planning Commission would be particularly attuned to the comments of the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, so. Um, so anyway, that is why, um, I, I thank you for that recitation of the law because I think that was very important. It's not a discretionary thing. Um, um, they do not, um, well, that statement needed some clarity. Um, um, and you've provided it because the, the federal government does not have to listen to us. And that, so that's not a position that we're taking. It's set forth in the law. Okay, so, um, it, um, so I don't have any other speakers signed up at this time. Um, now, I could go back, as always, the applicant has the ability and the right to close out. So I could go back if you, if you would like, if anyone who wants to speak on behalf of the applicant, particularly Mr. Davis, I guess.
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, the one thing I just wanted to point out is we are absolutely, you know, from day one, we have been, um, uh, uh, you know, providing community outreach to basically anybody who will listen to us. We, we did have to take a pause during the EIS process, um, just because we want to let that process, um, play out. But we have absolutely every, um, intent to, you know, uh, begin newsletters to the Vansville area, uh, you know, as part of our outreach to, of how the project is, uh, progressing. And then I can also tell you that we do value, um, your comments and, and concerns about the project. We have gone through the draft EIS and are in the process of revising that for a final EIS with, with over five hundred-plus comments that we're, um, incorporating into the EIS. And we're also, um, our design team also has, um, been looking at a lot of the Prince George's County, um, noise, lights, landscape ordinances and, and planning documents that you, um, have published. And we're, um, as you've heard from our designer, and, and as I've mentioned, you know, we're very much interested in complying with those to the greatest extent possible. So I just wanted to leave with that, that we, we are, we're not trying to, we're, we're, we're not, we're not doing this just to do it, you know? It's part of, it's part of the mandatory referral, but, you know, we do want to hear your feedback, and we have been hearing feedback all along, you know, such as the folks along O'Dell Road. That's why we, um, have a, um, you know, an emergency egress only, you know, looking at the sounds that trucks might make or for deliveries. I mean, there's, there's a list of items that, you know, we're, we're in the process of evaluating as we go through the design to try and mitigate our presence. Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Davis. So, um, again, I had called on Melissa Dawson a few times. Um, I, I, she did not hear, but we do have her letter just, uh, preserved in the record, so I just want to make that really clear. So let's see if the board has any questions of anyone, and if not, is, if there's a motion. Ms. Osay, do you need, do you need to add anything else at this time? And when we're clear on your, okay, okay.
No, ma'am. I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions of anyone? I see no, um, questions, no raised hands, no comments. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the recommendations of staff and approve the transmittal of MR dash two, one, zero, one F to, uh, Mr. Marcel Acosta with the National Capital Planning Commission. Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Uh, Madam Vice Chair?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
But I.
Commissioner Dooner?
Aye.
And then Commissioner Geraldo?
But I, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, the ayes have it five-zero. Thank you, everyone, for your participation today. It counts. Um, how about we take a two-minute break, two- to three-minute break, and come back, and we'll have item ten, nine, and three A. Thank you. Okay. Oh, one more. Okay, the Prince George's County Planning Board is back in session. We are getting ready to take the next couple of cases. We're going to start with item ten, which is planning assistance to municipalities and communities, followed by item nine, followed by item three A. So item ten, let's make sure we have everyone. Ms. Ermerger, are you on?
I am.
Wonderful. Okay, and Mr. Stachura?
He's out today.
He's off today, just when I get his name right. Okay, all right. Ms. Ermerger, you are on.
Okay. Um, good afternoon, members of the planning board. For the record, my name is Wendy Ermerger with the Neighborhood Revitalization Section of the Community Planning Division. I am here to request your approval of revisions to the guidelines and procedures that we use to administer the Planning Assistance to Municipalities and Communities Program, known as PAMC. Next slide. The, um, PAMC program has three distinct goals. They are to further the implementation of planning policy strategies and recommendations in our county's approved plans. They are to support the capacity building of community, within communities through short-term projects that achieve our plan objectives, and to capitalize on in-house planning expertise. Next slide. Examples of, um, PAMC programs are, um, varied. Um, they vary in type, uh, types and goals, and they are include, but are not limited to, uh, marketing and branding plans, economic studies, cultural resource inventory, streetscape designs, national register, historic district nominations, and projects like that. Here are a few examples. We've had fourteen projects funded since night, two thousand eighteen. Ten of these are still ongoing. By the end of this fiscal year, four of those will be completed, and we anticipate four new projects will be presented to you for funding. Next slide. The revisions that we're asking you to approve today include, um, allowing us to procure consultant services earlier in the project approval process, so you will have the exact cost of the project when staff presents it to you for funding. The next revision increases the per-project maximum from fifty thousand to sixty-five thousand dollars. Next, we change the acceptance of applications to a rolling basis rather than twice a year as it is now. The rolling basis is more practical until we have a greater volume of applications. We needed to update the preferential policy areas stated in the guidelines by deleting references to TNI or transformative neighborhood initiative areas and adding business improvement districts. Next, uh, guideline was added to ensure that an applicant doesn't have more than one PAMC project going on at the same time because we aim to disperse these projects throughout the county. And lastly, to ensure that applicants have the backing of the entire organization that they represent, especially when they're not, um, five oh one C three, uh, organizations. Um, we ask that they submit minutes from the meeting where they voted to apply to the PAMC program. Next slide. Um, so today we are asking, um, for your vote, um, to approve these guidelines as presented to you today. And I'm, of course, here for, um, answering any questions. This concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ermerger. Uh, we appreciate it. Uh, let's see if there are any questions. Um, Madam Vice Chair? She muted. She's muted.
Thank you, thank you. Good work. Thank you.
Okay, I, uh, Commissioner Washington?
No questions, but thank you, Ms. Ermerger.
Okay, um, Commissioner Dooner?
No questions. Thank you for, for this. I, I think the, um, the planning assistance that we provide is, is great. We have super dedicated and professional staff that have just crazy specializations that are really useful that smaller municipalities and suburbs can't access. They, they just don't have the resources. And it's really nice that we're able to get back to the local communities and help them, um, in this way. So thank you.
Yes, indeed. And, and Commissioner Geraldo?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Ermerger and, and all of the staff for revitalizing the communities in our county. That work is really appreciated. Sometimes you guys are in the background, but we start seeing the results, so we appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. And it's also reminding me I better head back into Vigilante Coffee and get me some good coffee there. Okay.
Yes, I have a new barbecue place opening this noon, too.
That works too. Talk about food.
If that works. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I enthusiastically move that we accept the, uh, recommendation of staff and approve the revisions to the, uh, twenty twenty-one PMAC guidelines and procedures. Second?
Yeah, the motion from Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Madam Vice Chair?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
But I.
Commissioner Dooner?
But I.
Commissioner Geraldo?
But I, Madam Chair, thank you.
The ayes have it five-zero. Thank you so much, Ms. Ermerger. Um, okay, next we have item nine, which is preliminary plan of subdivision four dash one, nine, zero, one, one, the towns at Brandywine Crossing. Let's make sure we have everyone. Ms. Gupta? Okay, there you are. Okay, wonderful. Mr. How, Mr. Howler?
Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair. I'm present.
Okay, wonderful. Mr. Bickle?
I'm present.
Mr. Lenhart?
Present.
Um, we have, um, additional backup. We have, um, your parcel A exhibit, um, applicant's exhibit number one, and we have applicant's proposed revised conditions, which would be applicant exhibit number two. Um, and therefore, Ms. Gupta, you are on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is Muridala Gupta, Planning Coordinator with the subdivision section. Item number nine on the agenda is a preliminary plan of subdivision for towns at Brandywine Crossing, four dash one, nine, zero, one, one. The subject property consists of three parcels, which are to be subdivided into hundred and seventy lots and twenty-three parcels for the development of hundred and seventy single-family attached dwellings on eighteen point five eight acres. Next slide, please. Slide two is, I'm, excuse me. The site is located in the southern part of Prince George's County, within Planning Area eighty-five A and Council District nine. Slide three, please. More specifically, the site is located approximately a quarter mile east of the intersection of US three oh one and Matta Peak Business Drive. Slide four, please. The site is located in light industrial, I one zone. The properties directly to the north and south are located in the MXT and I one zone respectively. The other adjacent zones are the CSC and I two zones. Slide five, please. The aerial photograph shows the site, which consists of three existing parcels, which were previously created, cleared and graded. A regional stormwater management pond is located in the northeast corner of the site, and another regional stormwater management pond is located immediately to the south. The property is flanked to the east by a flood plain associated with the Timothy branch, and is bound to the west by the Matta Peak Business Drive, right away with the Brandywine Shopping Center beyond. Slide six, please. The site map shows the topography on this, on the site, which is essentially flat and slopes eastwards towards the two stormwater mansion ponds. Slide seven, please. The master plan right-of-way map shows the major collector, NC five oh three, highlighted in blue, located west of the site. US three oh one Crane Highway is highlighted in orange, and the arterial A fifty-five, that is the Matta Woman Drive, is shown here in red. Next slide, please. This slide shows the locations in which the applicant proposes off-site pedestrian and bicycle improvements. These improvements include crosswalks and sidewalk upgrades. Staff finds these facilities profit by the applicant, and those recommended by staff will meet the bicycle and pedestrian adequacy requirements. Slide nine, please. The critical intersections analyzed by staff are circled here in red and green. The intersections of Maryland five, US three oh one, at Timothy Branch Drive, and MD five, US three oh one, at Climate Drive, Matta Peak Business Drive, shown here to the left of the slide, will operate at an inadequate level of service, given the proposed development. Consequently, staff is recommending a fee payment to the Brandywine Road Club as a means of addressing adequacy of transportation facilities, as further detailed on page eleven of the staff report. Next slide, please. This overall view of the preliminary plan of subdivision shows the proposed layout of hundred and seventy lots and road circulation in light blue. The townhouse decks are highlighted in red. The site is accessed from Matta Peak Business Drive, which is shown here in purple, at two locations, one each at both ends of the site. Adequate public facilities, including water, sewer, fire, and rescue facilities are available to serve the subject site. Police response times are not adequate for the site. However, a capital improvement program includes a new station for police district five, in which the site is located. Therefore, mitigation is not required. The master plan of transportation calls for the development of a planned hard-surface hiker-biker equestrian trail known as the Timothy Branch Trail along the eastern portion of the subject property. This trail has been shifted to Matta Peak Business Drive to match up with the trail segments planned for residential development to the north, including the new Timothy Branch community. This application indicates that the fifteen-foot easement located along the Timothy Branch This application indicates that the fifteen-foot easement located along the Timothy Branch Stream Valley along the eastern boundary of the site is proposed to be extinguished. Instead, an eight-foot wide path is located along the entire frontage of Mata Peak Business Drive, which will provide to uh to accommodate the master plan trail. Staff finds that shifting the Timothy Branch Trail along the site's frontage will provide the pedestrian connectivity sought by the recommended trail while not impacting environmental features associated with the stream valley. Next slide, please. The applicant's exhibit provided a breakdown of unit types, parking sidewalks, and conceptual recreation facilities. These features, as well as the design of townhouse units, will be further evaluated at the TSP stage. The site's pedestrian circulation system can be seen here in further detail. Sidewalks, highlighted in blue, are planned on both sides of the internal streets as well as providing connections to the onsite recreation areas, the starboard pond to the right, and the Brandywine Crossing Shopping Center situated across uh the Mata Peak Business Drive to the left. The applicant has proposed private onsite recreation facilities to address the mandatory parkland dedication requirement. These facilities may include accessible green space and open play areas with walking paths and benches, a clubhouse, and a fitness studio. Staff evaluated the adequacy of the preferred recreation facilities in accordance with the Prince George's County Arts and Recreation Facilities Guidelines and found the proposal satisfactory. The citing and the details of the recreational facilities will be further evaluated during the review of the TSP. The proposed woodland conservation area is shown here in dark green. The hashed area to the right depicts the previous previously recorded floodplain buffer area for Timothy branch. Next slide, please. The type two uh type one tree conservation plan shows the point five acres of environmental regulated features known as primary management area highlighted here in pink. This primary management area consists of both the floodplain associated with the Timothy Branch Green and streets and steep slopes. No impacts are proposed to the primary management area. The woodland preservation and reforestation areas are highlighted here in light green. Next slide, next slide, please. Since publishing of the staff report, the applicant has proposed to preserve the point one nine acres of existing woodland which which were previously being impacted. Um, and the applicant proposes to do it by revising the layout of the lots located in the southern eastern portion of the site. The project will thus retain the entire existing onsite woodlands, a forest, and additional point two five acres onsite and meet the remaining woodland conservation requirements offsite. Staff finds the revised layout acceptable, given that the applicant intends to preserve hundred percent of the existing woodlands and widen the conservation buffer along Timothy Branch. Next slide, please. This slide discusses the issue of the proposed right-of-way dedication along Mata Peak Business Drive. The current road was developed as a four-lane undivided road within a seventy-foot right-of-way to serve industrial zone properties. The master plan rezoned several sites adjoining the subject property to the MXT zone and upgraded Mata Peak Business Drive to a major collector facility, which requires a hundred-foot right-of-way, which is shown here in red. The master plan road MC five oh three continues after the roundabout in a sou- sou- easterly direction, also shown here in red, link up to Mata Woman Drive, a master plan arterial road. The applicant proposes to dedicate only five feet of additional right-of-way along Mata Peak Business Drive, shown here in blue. The reduced right-of-way will will result in an eighty-foot urban collector roadway. The road cross-section, road cross-sections shown to the right depict the eventual build-out for Mata Peak Business Drive for an eighty-foot right-of-way road and a hundred-foot right-of-way road. The essential difference between the two is the introduction of a twenty-foot wide median for a hundred-foot wide major collector road, which provides space for pedestrian refuge and acco- and to accommodate turning lanes where required. Subdivision staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings and approve the preliminary plan of subdivision four dash one nine zero one one and type one tree conservation plan TCP one dash zero two three dash two zero two zero, subject to the twenty-two conditions in the staff report. The applicant has submitted uh two exhibits. The first exhibit, uh, which are the exhibits are located in the additional backup. The first one, which shows the five-foot right-of-way which was dedicated along Mata Peak Business Drive for preliminary plan of subdivision four dash one six zero one three, which was approved by the planning board in July of two thousand and seventeen for subdivision of a property for development of multifamily dwellings. The applicant's exhibit also includes an aerial map and a zoning map for the subject property, which is located further north of uh this site along the same east side of Mata Peak Business Drive. During the hearing for preliminary plan four dash one six zero one three, the planning board approved dedication by plan of five-foot wide right-of-way and creation of a ten-foot wide parcel to be dedicated upon demand for future widening of the road. The applicant also submitted revisions to staff's recommended conditions of approval. This is exhibit number two. This document is uh specifically, the applicant has suggested revisions to recommended conditions one G, one I, eight, six, eight, and nineteen C, D, and E. In consideration of planning board's previous approval for PPS four dash one six zero one three for a similar right-of-way dedication along Mata Peak Business Drive, staff reviewed the uh staff reviewed the suggested provisions. Staff has since discussed the revisions with the applicant and has come to an, come into an agreement with the language of the revised recommended conditions. The applicant will be presenting the proposed revisions to the recommended conditions later during this hearing. In line with the revised recommended conditions of one G and eight, staff will also revise finding seven of the staff report, specifically uh the transportation section on master plan and site access. This concludes staff presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Gupta. Um, let's see if there are any questions from you at this time and and then and um and thank you for your exhibit, um, your slide fourteen, because that wasn't in my packet, I think, and that helps me understand a couple of things, too. Um, so let's see if there are any questions. Madam Vice Chair.
No questions. Well done.
Okay. Commissioner Washington.
No questions at this time. Thank you, Ms. Gupta.
Okay, Commissioner Dorner.
Yeah, I have a question about um the bike path. So I know that we took the Timothy um Branch Trail and we're moving it over to um the east side of the of the Mata Peak Bay or Business Drive. Um, what I can't tell, and so I think it's gonna be basically that blue line that's on this slide and and follow that up. Um, correct me if I'm if I'm wrong. Um, but what I can't tell on the right-of-way maps to to the right of that is whether or not the bike lanes are are going to be a shared space um on the sidewalks that are gonna be those eight-foot wide sidewalks or if they're actually gonna be in the road. Um, because there's a, there's a strike through of the bike lanes. Like my, my reading of the staff report was that they were gonna be on the sidewalks and be kind of a shared path. Um, but when when I saw this um the urban collector road um kind of drawings, I I wasn't sure if maybe we were gonna try and put them on the road instead.
Uh, yes, Commissioner. I I was trying to use the standard cross-section that DPWT uses and I was trying to reflect that we are, in fact, we'll have a shared path eight feet wide outside the uh the normal uh pavement section of the road. So it'll be protected and it'll be um, it'll be a combined shared path eight feet wide.
Okay, and then I read, yeah, yeah, so that that definitely answers. I I like the bike paths when there, when there's more protection or just pedestrian paths in general. Um, the the sharrows that are on the roads are are nice, but they don't always get cleaned up and and it still is a little bit dangerous sometimes. Um, is there gonna be any kind of a a marking on these paths, and this might be a question for Mr. Howler, um, that would designate kind of like the the direction, because when, if you start to get people walking and riding on the sidewalks, um, it would be nice just to have at least a little bit of distinction, um, so they don't, they don't kind of run head-on.
Uh, right now, the sec, the uh requirement is for this uh shared path on one side of the road. And um this signage will be reviewed further at the TSP stage.
Okay, so maybe Mr. Howler can talk about whether or not it's gonna be, I don't know if it's wide enough to have kind of people going in both directions. Um, kind of continue, like if it'd be a trail of that nature or if it's just kind of a wide sidewalk. So maybe I'll I'll punt that to him. Um, and he can, he can talk a little bit more about that. And that that's it on my questions. Thank you.
Um, okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Geraldo.
I I have no questions, but thank you, Ms.
Okay, all right, so let's see who who else we have here. Mister, if there are no other questions, Mister Haller, we have.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, this is Thomas Howler, I'm attorney with offices in Largo and I'm representing the applicant today. Um, I did want to mention that although Ms. Gupta is a relatively new uh person for park and planning, um, I just wanna say that she's done a great job acclimating to uh to her role at uh in the subdivision office. And I've enjoyed working with her immensely on this and other projects. So I just wanted to to thank her for her assistance um in in working through the issues on this case. Um, I do wanna uh just start by giving a little bit of a beef, a brief background about this property. Um, just because when you look at the zoning map and you see it's I one and we're proposing residential development, it may, it may make you scratch your head a little bit, but as the board is aware, uh, this whole area of Brandywine uh was originally slated back in the eighties and nineties as an industrial development area. Um, in fact, this property was at one time part of a larger mining activity. And then um Brandywine Crossing uh started to transition the area into more of a retail area. And as you can see, um, all of the property on the west side of Mata Peak Business Drive uh is owned commercial. And so when the master plan was uh proposed back in two thousand and nine, it recommended that all of the land on the east side of Mata Peak Business Drive remain in the uh I one zone uh and stay industrial. And and in fact, was adopted in that manner. Um, but then, uh, as you recall, the two thousand and nine uh master plan and sectional map amendment uh ended up being reversed in court and uh came back to the county council. And when the county council re-adopted uh the master plan and sectional map amendment back in two thousand and thirteen, they rezoned the property north of of the property that's before you today to the MXT zone on the east side of Mata Peak Business Drive, but they did not zone this property. So what you ended up with uh on the southern end of Mata Peak Business Drive was a parcel of property in the I one zone uh that um where everything else was either commercial or or MXT. And so it created this situation where the the owner was put in an awkward situation. Do I, do I try to find a warehouse or I, do I find some other industrial use for the property or do I seek something that uh is more compatible with direction that the Brandywine Center is going? And uh, and so as a result of that, in uh two thousand and eighteen, uh, the council adopted CR sixty-two that allows um residential development in limited circumstances in the I one zone. And this property um qualifies for that residential development, uh, which will, which will be far more consistent with the uh ultimate zoning for this area, because the uh, the general plan designated this as a center and the proposed zoning through the uh countywide map amendment would place this property into an activity center zone that would allow residential development. So um rather than um putting the property owner in a position where they had no choice but to pursue industrial development or wait until the comprehensive rezoning was approved, uh, the property was allowed to move forward with this uh development. And because of that, Folger Pratt is the contract purchaser for the property and they are the ones that are proposing to construct this uh, this residential community. So um with that background, just so that the board had better understanding of that, um, I did wanna also respond to Commissioner Dorner's comment. Um, I think that uh the details of how this uh path gets uh signed and designated or striped can be worked out at the time of detailed site plan. We would be open to a a finding uh to have that to be addressed at the time of detailed site plan. Um, as you uh know, and as the staff mentioned, uh, there are originally plans to place a trail on the east side of the property um adjacent to the floodplain. Um, but after many years of consideration, it was determined that uh the Department of Parks and Recreation did not want that trail and the obligation and maintenance of that trail and recommended that the path be moved uh to Mata Peak Business Drive. So uh we will be constructing that path as part of the development of this property and um uh as well as several other pedestrian-oriented improvements, crosswalks and whatnot in uh relationship to this development. So, but I, but I appreciate that comment and I think that that's an issue that we probably need to take a closer look at at the time of detail. Um, the the only other comment that I wanted to make is that we have, we have worked with staff uh with regard to the treatment of the proposed right-of-way and the dedication. And uh the board will remember that we were before you about three years ago on the property to the north of this, not immediately to the north, but but.
Mister Howler, can you guide um uh Mister Plantagen here to the property that you're referring to now?
Oh, sure. So if you, um, uh, if you, if you look at the property in purple immediately to the north of the subject property, that is an existing developed um commercial building. Um, and that uh property um was developed several years ago, was then later placed in the MXT zone after it was developed. The property north of that um was the property that was before you three years ago called Union Park. And that is a three hundred and twelve multifamily dwelling of complex. Um, that is um, that has been approved as an approved detailed site plan now. And you will recall that we were before you uh at that time addressing the right-of-way requirements along Mata Peak Business Drive. And we uh agreed to a dedication of five feet uh to allow for the construction of this eight-foot side path and uh and and the preservation of existing land in a separate parcel uh should the Department of Permanent Effects Enforcement ever decide uh that the roadway needed to be widened.
Okay, Mister Howler, stop for a second. Stop for a second. Can, stop. Can we go to slide three? Maybe, and um, and so, so there we go. So right above, so you see the commercial building right there, right?
Correct. So the building that's uh depicted immediately to the north of this property is the commercial building that I told you about that was constructed prior to being placed in the MXT zone. And the property immediately north of that is the property in which the Union Park development is proposed.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So what we, what we have proposed here is it's is a consistent uh treatment uh for both properties along the east side of Mata Peak Business Drive. So with, with that background, I do, uh, as as uh staff indicated, we submitted proposed revisions to conditions uh which we have worked through with staff and we do have a revised uh set of conditions. Unfortunately, the set that was placed in your backup is not the right set. So if it might be possible for me to uh share my screen, I can go, I can show you the conditions which we we have agreed to with staff and can then um uh that would be a lot easier for the board to understand what modifications are being proposed.
Okay, we're gonna allow that here. Mister Plantagen is working on that with you before you.
And and um if you do have the revised conditions that were in the backup, I can explain to you where where the changes originally submitted are proposed.
That's trying to share a screen is what he's trying to, okay. Okay, there we go. Well, now I see you all. So I think we gave you, yeah, there we go.
So you can see that?
No, we cannot. When you make it larger, please.
Yes. Anything.
Considerably larger.
Is it because his screen is turned, what is that off thing?
The document, go down to the bottom right where you see the little scale. Yeah, move it closer to 100. Yeah. There we go. There we go. Okay.
That should work. I was having a hard time seeing it too, so. You were explaining to me how to do that. I'm not sure I could have gotten there.
You're welcome.
So the, in the backup that was given to you, we had proposed revisions to condition 1G and we have worked through that with staff to come up with the mechanism for the revision to to the condition to implement the dedication of the right-of-way along Mata Peak Business Drive. And so, as I said, in consistent with what was done a couple of years ago on the Union Park property, this condition 1G now specifies that we will create a 10-foot parcel in width and as well as a five-foot dedication and that the 10-foot parcel would be reserved in perpetuity and dedicated to deep high on-demand in the future. So that revision to condition G is different than what we had originally proposed, but this is the condition we've now worked out with staff. In condition 1I, we had originally proposed to remove that condition and with further conversation with staff are modifying it now, as you see on the screen in front of you. The only change now to condition 1I that would be proposed is to change the 10-foot width to seven feet to address staff's concern with regard to condition 1I. The next revision is to condition six. And that has to do with providing certain pedestrian details on the detailed site plan. And this is just a minor rewording to make sure that we were all in agreement as to exactly how that was going to be presented as part of the detailed site plan. And I believe that staff and the applicant are both in agreement on that. The next revision is to condition eight. And again, that goes to the implementation of the mechanism for implementing the right-of-way dedication and the reservation of the parcel. So the first part of condition eight says at the time of final plat, the applicant will dedicate the five foot of right-of-way along Mata Peak Business Drive. Condition 8B provides for the provision of a note on the plat consistent with the prior case where that right-of-way will be retained in private ownership and dedicated upon demand. And then in our proposed revisions to condition eight, we had added some additional language to implement the future dedication and that's now been added as condition 23 at the back of the proposed conditions. So proposed condition 23 provides that after the development of 170 townhouses, the applicant will convey the right-of-way to the county upon demand. And then the final revisions to the conditions are back to condition 19 and which you can see conditions 19C, D, and E. And one of the exhibits that staff showed you was there was an original area of tree preservation on-site and we had, our original proposal had been to remove some of the onsite woodlands. This property was cleared years ago under prior tree conservation plan and staff expressed a desire that we preserve all of the existing woodlands on-site. And so we are proposing to revise the plan to do that and in addition to plant some additional trees on-site to widen the buffer adjacent to the floodplain. And these revisions to the conditions in 19C, D, and E would implement those revisions to the plan. So that would be the total substance of the proposed revisions to the to the conditions that's before you. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have with regard to any of those proposed revisions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Haller. I think this is a good compromise. Okay. And there's a precedent. Let's see what happens if there are other questions. Madam Vice Chair.
No questions.
Excuse me?
No, I thought I heard somebody else speaking. I don't have any, well, one clarifying question. Ms. Gupta, you mentioned, well, first of all, are you in agreement with what Mr. Haller just presented by way of revised conditions? And then if so, the only change you would need to make is with regards to finding number seven. I believe that's how I understand your, understood your comment.
Yes, Commissioner. So the revised conditions that Mr. Haller is presenting is after extensive discussion between staff and him as well as the engineer. And the only thing that's not referenced here is due to the revised findings of 1G and 8, we will be revising finding eight in our staff report.
Okay.
By seven, I'm sorry. It's finding seven.
Okay, I was making good notes. I wanted to make sure I was right. Thank you so much.
And let me elaborate on that because what, depending on how the motion goes, if, because I know that, Ms. Gupta, you're in agreement with this. So we will, when the resolution comes back to the findings, we'll then be there for the board to, consistent with the motion. So for the, so the board will then adopt the findings. I just want to make sure that there will ultimately be our findings, the board's findings. Thank you. Okay. 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 Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Donner.
No, no questions. I look forward to seeing what comes up at the DSP, assuming that the vote goes in favor for the path and stuff.
Okay, and Commissioner Geraldo.
Commissioner Washington has the question that I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I don't have anyone else, I don't believe, signed up to speak, unless they're just for questions. Mr. Bickel and Mr. Lenhart, you're here to answer any questions, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, wonderful. So if the board has some other questions of anyone, Ms. Gupta, do you have anything else to add or Mr. Haller anything else to add or we're going for it?
No, I have nothing else.
Okay, that sounds like it's motion time. Let's go to our leap year baby.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff in addition to asking staff to work with council and ensuring a revised finding to condition, excuse me, finding number seven and approve preliminary plan 4-19011 along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report and the following conditions as revised per the presentation by Mr. Haller to conditions 1G, 1I, condition six, condition eight, condition 19C, condition 19D, 19E, and new condition number 23.
Second. Have a motion. And we, by Commissioner Washington, and we have a second by Vice Chair Bailey. Madam Vice Chair.
Vote I and I for the motion maker.
Okay. Motion maker.
Vote I.
Okay. Probably to both. Okay. And Commissioner Donner.
Hi.
And Commissioner Geraldo.
Hi.
Okay, the eyes have it 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Hightower. We have item 3A, which is legislation CB9 2021.
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Before beginning my presentation to you, the planning board, yes, good afternoon. I would like to notify you that the bill sponsor is not moving forward with this legislation. It's no longer needed. The county council committee of the hold this morning voted 11-0 to hold the bill in committee indefinitely. On Monday, planning department staff sent comments on the proposed legislation to the county council for their deliberations. Staff can continue to discuss this legislation if you would like, but.
If they're holding it, they probably have a reason and it would likely come back. And if it comes back at all, it'll come back differently, most likely, you think?
Well, it's no longer needed, is what the bill sponsors.
Then guess what else we don't need? Okay. But it was good to see you, Ms. Hightower.
Visitation. I'm crying.
Yes.
You still amaze me. Thank you.
It's good to see you, Ms. Hightower. So that leads me to two things. First of all, as we close out, well, you know what, first that leads me to Mr. Hunt. Mr. Hunt.
It's Madam Chair.
Is there any additional business to come before this board today on March 4, 2021?
There are no additional business items before the board today.
Thank you very much. I'm about to hit this gavel, but before I do, we are going to close out again. Peter Goldsmith, wherever you are, we wish you a happy birthday again and we certainly wish a happy birthday to our leap year baby, Commissioner O'Shaughnessy Washington. And again, we close out with happy Women's History Month and happy International Women's Day to everyone. And please stay safe. It's good to see you even virtually, but stay safe. This ain't over. Stay kind and just have a fabulous, wonderful weekend and planning board is adjourned.
Thank you, Madam.
Our double board, we did it.